Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December 2 meeting of the Ann Arbor City Council. If you're able, please rise and join us for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would our clerk please call the role of council?
Councilmember Dish?
Here.
Councilmember Harrison?
Here.
Councilmember Watson?
Here.
Councilmember Malik?
Here.
Councilmember Radina?
Here.
Councilmember Gazie Edwin?
Here.
Mayor Taylor?
Here.
Councilmember Ayer?
Here.
Councilmember Ackman?
Here.
Councilmember Briggs?
Here.
Councilmember Cornell?
Here.
We have a quorum.
May I have a motion, please, to approve the agenda? Move by, Councilmember Radina, seconded by Councilmember Gazie Edwin. Discussion of the agenda. Councilmember Radina.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to add the proposed resolution to approve 2025 council committee appointments to DC 3.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Watson. Discussion. All in favor? Posed. The amendment is approved for the discussion of the agenda as amended. All in favor? Posed. The agenda is approved. Are there communications today from our city administrator?
No, Mayor.
In that light, we do have today a presentation, an introduction. We have the pleasure of a communication from the Chair of our Independent Community Police Oversight Commission, Chair Carter. You have the con.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members, Madam Clerk. There's a lot going on in the oversight community. And in keeping with our responsibility to educate and train ourselves, two of the commissioners did attend the National Association of Civilian Oversight and Law Enforcement Conference in October. And first thing I want to say about this is a national conference, and I just have to report that at the opening session, in front of hundreds of people, the city and councilperson Harrison were recognized for the passage of the Driving Equality Ordinance. That was quite a recognition, and we were happy to be there to hear that. We heard a lot about oversight across the country, and as you probably know, there are different forms of commissions that are set up. We, of course, are a review commission, and we understand that. We also learned, this wasn't at the NAOC conference, but we learned that in the state of Florida, the governor has signed a bill which effectively does away with community oversight. And the commissions there now have to be appointed by the sheriff or the chief of police. And there must be at least one retired police officer on the commission. So when we hear things like this and see what's going on across the country, we are appreciative of the independence that council has given us in our ordinance. Here in Michigan, you may be aware that a package of bills has been introduced and is now in committee in the state legislature dealing with policing. Part of it is to update licensing requirements under the Michigan Commission on Law Enforcement Standards. There is a proposal for a duty-to-intervene policy, which would require officers to intervene if a peer is using excessive force. There's another bill that protects the anonymity of people who file complaints against the police. So we'll be watching these. And that one was very interesting to us because we are in the process of working with Chief Anderson on some of the policies. And one of them has to do with redaction policy. It's important for us to do our oversight and look at complaints, and we need to know what's going on, so the information has to be available. What I'm showing you, this is under the old policy, no longer in effect. But this is the kind of report that we would get. So we don't know what's going on in this case, and it's hard to do oversight when you don't know what's going on. So we are working with the chief on a new redaction policy. Also, we're working with the chief on a policy that was actually passed by ICPOC back in 2020, and it was passed on to the police department and never apparently implemented. So at our last meeting last week, we again approved the policy. This is the Serious Incident Response Contingency Plan. We've passed it on to Chief Anderson. It defines what a serious incident is, includes loss of life or a shooting and so forth. And when such a serious incident occurs, the policy would have a report come to ICPOC so that the community, and then to the community, so the community is aware of what's going on. So that is pending. I think, finally, we are happy that we believe, probably in our January meeting, we'll have finally a full contingent of commissioners. We believe that there will be two prospects coming before you soon, so that at our meeting at the end of January, we will have a full contingent of commissioners. That is my report for today. If there are no questions or comments, thank you.
Thank you. We now come to public comment reserve time. Public comment reserve time is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to council and the community about matters of municipal interest. To speak at public comment reserve time, one needs to have signed up in advance by contacting our city clerk. Speakers in all instances will have three minutes in which to speak, so please pay close attention to the time. Our clerk or the time clock will notify you when 30 seconds are remaining and when your time is expired. When your time's expired, please conclude your remarks and cede the floor. Our first speaker today is Ken Garber.
I appreciate the opportunity. Ken Garber, second ward. I don't live near the airport, but I belong to StayGrounded.org and Flight Free USA. These orgs seek to educate the public on the emissions impact of commercial aviation. I haven't flown personally since 2016 for climate reasons. So I'm here about the runway extension. The environmental assessment is wrong to dismiss climate as a factor. It puts 2019 airport CO2 emissions at just 964 metric tons. That's because the FAA only counts emissions on sight. That's why calling a Hummer climate-friendly based on its driveway emissions only. Here's the real impact. In 2019, there were 1,476 trips here by jet and turbojet. Assuming an average trip of 250 miles, at 4.9 kilogram CO2 emissions per mile, that's 18,000 metric tons CO2, almost 20 times the FAA estimate. And that's just CO2. Adding in nitrogen oxide, water vapor, and contrails with their greenhouse effects, you double that impact. Now consider jet fuel upstream emissions from oil production, extraction, transportation, and refining. And I estimate maybe 50,000 metric tons CO2 equivalent emissions annually from jet and turbojet traffic to and from our airport. If we count it this way, which we don't as a city, but should, that would raise the city's total transportation emissions by 14%. Now, there's the argument that by enabling jets to go from point A to point B without refueling, one positive effect of runway extension, that could actually lower emissions. Any such effect would be small compared to direct emissions. In short, the finding of no significant impact when it comes to climate in the EA is wrong because of flawed methodology. Flying private is the single fastest way for an individual to cook the planet, 10 times faster than flying commercial and 50 times faster than train travel per passenger mile. And global private jet travel is exploding. The Journal Communications, Earth, and Environment just reported that CO2 emissions from private aviation jumped 46% between 2019 and 2023. Thanks to flying, some wealthy individuals produce almost 500 times more CO2 in a year than the average person. In my opinion, we should ban private jets at the airport, as some European cities have done. Let's exempt health emergencies like U of M survival flight and donor organ transport. But let's make a statement as a city that we don't welcome the corporate elite and the super wealthy individuals whose luxury flights are helping to destroy the planet. Remember, 80% of the world's population has never set foot on an airplane. Most are in the global south, and they're the ones suffering most. Flying private is emblematic of our many excesses as a society.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carl Barton.
Hello. The city of Ann Arbor, if you have, if a citizen of the city of Ann Arbor has a problem with the police department, we are told to contact the ICPOC Committee. The question I have is, after contacting the ICPOC Committee and they don't bring up the issue in any of the meetings, they don't present a resolution, and the problem keeps on continuing, what should a citizen do to address the ongoing issue with the Ann Arbor Police? If you go on Google Maps right now and look up Larkham City Hall on Ann Arbor or Ann Street, you can see an Ann Arbor police cruiser parked in a towaway zone. If you go on YouTube and search Ann Arbor Police Department and Sean Stewart, who's the president of the Ann Arbor Police Union, and then click on Detroit Local 4 News segment, the introduction starts with them zooming in on an Ann Arbor police cruiser parked in a towaway zone. If you go to Street View on Google Earth, you can count over a dozen Ann Arbor police vehicles parked in paid parking spots. Any day of the week, you can go on Ann Street and look at that during the paid parking time, and you can easily see over half a dozen police vehicles paid in parking spots. If you contact police officers and ask them about this, every single one I've talked to instantly says they're exempt from traffic laws. Michigan codified law 257-603 is very clear. Police officers are only exempt from traffic laws on the way to an emergency call, and they have to have their lights or sirens on unless stealth is required. The law also clearly states that police officers are not exempt on the way back parking or anything other than on a call. Yet, when you talk to any police officer, they'll instantly say they're exempt from all traffic laws. Now, that means that either the entire Ann Arbor Police Department is ill-trained on what they are exempt of, or they're intentionally lying to citizens. Now, I don't know if it's incompetency or intentional, but that's not beneficial to our society. So the solution is easy. As a city, we get the Ann Arbor Police to stop illegally parking on Ann Street. The problem is, how do we get the Ann Arbor Police to stop illegally parking on Ann Street? Because as videos go more, there's just going to be more and more evidence of the Ann Arbor Police illegally parking in front of City Hall. Now, I hope that, I've got to go, but I hope that someone from this committee is actually going to respond or willing to actually volunteer and meet with me or meet with a citizen to discuss this issue. I'll watch the rest of this video online, and hopefully one of you will actually step up and help resolve this issue. Thank you for your time. Have a good day.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dan Bilic.
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to speak here. My name is Dan Bilic, and along with my wife Karen White, I live at 2719 Cranbrook in southeast Ann Arbor, directly beneath the flight path for aircraft approaching Ann Arbor Municipal Airport. I've been distracted by national politics this past year and just recently found out that Ann Arbor Airport changes are being considered. Eleven days ago, I did email my councilpeople or three concerning rumors. I'd heard about this, but I'm still awaiting a response, so I'm not all that well informed about what's going on here. However, it does concern me. I have a very nice backyard at my house on Cranbrook Road, near Platten, Packer, Burr Park, County Farm Park, southeast side of Ann Arbor. War III, it's a great neighborhood, lots of trees, sidewalks, good people. My family likes to be outside a lot, especially from April to November. And let me tell you, the incoming planes that go over my house are unfortunately very often loud, distracting and annoying. And some days, there's lots of them. I have reason to be very suspicious that any so-called safety improvements at the airport will likely be used as an excuse or pretext to bring bigger, louder, and more numerous aircraft to the airport. This would have an immediate and direct negative impact upon my family's quality of life and, incidentally, would also impact the property values of every house in the neighborhood. I'm going to have to raise my voice now a little to make a point. I'll try to be nice about it. This is beautiful that we have the skies right here. These aircraft can be loud. When these buzzing planes and whiny business jets fly over, we have to either raise our voices a lot or simply shut up for the 30 to 60 seconds it takes for these carbon-spewing chariots of the privilege to have their way with the skies above my neighborhood. Oh, no, there comes another one. Really, that's how it is. It's loud. It really is. By the way, we're also against carbon spewing here in Ann Arbor, aren't we? Ken Garber spoke to that. So, as I mentioned, I know I'm not as well-informed here as I would like to be, but this airport proposal sure looks like another giveaway to the airborne convenience of wealthy folks who, in most cases, don't even live in Ann Arbor. I'm not sure about that, but I bet. At the expense, in both quality of life and real estate treasure, of not-so-wealthy folks who do live in and pay taxes in Ann Arbor. Please, 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 don't do anything to facilitate more or bigger or different classes of aircraft buzzing and whining over my summer backyard. Thank you all.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Barbara Perkins.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor and council members. I'm here tonight to ask you to end the long, agonizing airport expansion controversy by soundly rejecting the proposal before you to accept funds from the Michigan Department of Transportation Aeronautics Division for planning and design of an extension to runway 624 at the Ann Arbor Municipal Airport. When a prior resolution was rejected by a bipartisan council a half century ago, the late Republican council member James Smirick added a postscript requiring that airport expansion not be brought back to council unless significant change had taken place near the intersection of State and Ellsworth Roads. Significant change has taken place, and that change makes even more apparent the imperative of rejecting any added capacity to a facility where the volume of aviation operations has declined dramatically. Now, business and residential sites surrounding the airport increase in volume and value with every passing year. I have lived in the same fourth ward house for nearly 60 years. During that time, I was appointed by three different mayors, two Democrats and one Republican, to three separate terms as a non-pilot citizen advocate on the Airport Advisory Committee. Expansion of capacity at the airport was consistently advocated by airport managers and other committee members throughout my three terms of service. Today, more housing is under construction at Braarwood and projected more around the 777 building. Costco, Zingermans, Knights, banks, hotels, and other businesses attract many customers to the area around the airport. Pollution of the Huron River and underground water by upriver industrial plants in the Gelman Plume make protection of the aquifer underneath our city even more crucial. The land at State and Ellsworth, then called the Steer Water Farm, was bought in 1913 for its access to the aquifer.
Thank you.
These waters must be protected.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Paul Kilney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I would like to take this opportunity to voice my opposition to the planned extension of the Ann Arbor runway 246. I'm a resident of Stonebridge, University of Michigan School of Medicine, professor emeritus of audiology specializing in audiology, and way back, a former air traffic controller. As such, I have expertise in hearing loss, the detrimental effects of noise on hearing, and other health issues, and also happen to have, still have, some understanding of aviation and flight patterns. For people residing near airports, the constant noise can be distressing, interrupting sleep, and leading to general noise annoyance in addition to causing hearing loss. Indeed, noise pollution is serious and ranks second as the most significant environmental health hazard after air pollution, according to the World Health Organization. The extension of the runway east toward Stonebridge, allowing the addition of larger jet aircraft, will result in low-flying twin-engine jets over Stonebridge on final approach, probably 100 feet or less. In addition to other hazards, this could result in significant damaging noise exposure to residents of Stonebridge with adverse effects on hearing, cardiovascular effects, sleep disturbance, stress, to name a few. The aircraft is a complex acoustic source comprising both engine and airframe components. It is the landing aircraft that generates the largest noise footprint. With a larger jet compared to currently the light, single-engine piston aircraft with its undercarriage down and flaps extended, flying low over Stonebridge, noise levels generated by engines and airframe could routinely exceed 100 decibels and could be occasionally as high as 130 decibels, significantly harmful to hearing. This would be an unacceptable, risky situation that could result in preventable injuries to residents and even possible litigation. The environmental study ignored individual noise events associated with a jet coming in for a straight-in approach, landing on the extended runway, and focused on cumulative annual average projections and noise contours. While cumulative noise exposure is a relevant overall measure, it is an incomplete picture of effects of noise exposure. Even a few individual occurrences on a daily basis could exact harm to residents of Stonebridge. Therefore, I respectfully request to consider the cancellation of this project. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alex Low.
Alex Low's joining us on Zoom. Go ahead.
Good evening. This is Alex Low calling in from north-southeast East Ann Arbor. I want to talk to you guys about the airport as well, but I seem to be the only one who's thinking about another particular type of pollution that airports provide, that is air-based lead pollution. You see, airports, or especially small municipal airports, are one of the few places left where you can buy leaded gasoline. And as small turboprops take off and land at the Ann Arbor Municipal Airport, they release all sorts of lead fumes right over the Bryant and Mitchell neighborhoods of Ann Arbor, which are some of the lowest-income neighborhoods in our city. Now, I don't actually think that expanding the airport is really going to do much to make Ann Arbor more available to people. After all, just 12 miles away from that airport is Willow Run, which has more capacity for airplanes, a longer runway at nearly the same angle rather than being 624, it is 523. And of course, Willow Run is already far busier than the Ann Arbor Municipal Airport. In fact, all things considered, I don't understand why we even have a municipal airport. Willow Run serves all of the needs of the Ann Arbor Municipal Airport. However, if we're going to keep it around, which expanding it would almost certainly mean that we're invested in having this waste of resources for another 50 or so years, then at least let's add something to this bill to say, "Stop selling leaded gasoline." Ann Arbor is home to one of the companies that sells and makes, and sells unleaded aviation gasoline, yet it is not available at our own airport.
30 seconds.
That's quite ridiculous. That's quite ridiculous. Let's stop polluting wards 3 and 4 with lead in the air and start selling unleaded avgas or just shut down that airport. It is, after all, quite redundant and redundant.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Greg Ferris.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. My name is Greg Ferris. I am the current Chair of the Airport Advisory Committee, and I'm here tonight to hope the council looks at the two resolutions that are about the airport runway safety extension project in place. The airport has been serving the community for over 96 years. It's been in place. It's brought mail delivery, passenger transport. It's been a part of, large part of, flight training. It does beneficial flights, like survival flight headquartered out of the Ann Arbor Airport. And it brings recreational and other commerce in place. The runway extension project is working on 624, as has been mentioned before. It's a runway that was paved in the late 1950s, so it's been around quite a while. The project is looking at two vital things in safety matters of mitigation. One is the end of 24, the one at State Street, is going to be shifted 150 feet. This is needed because the line of sight between the tower and those critical points of taxiway to a runway is not visible. Therefore, the FAA would consider it a possibility or a high risk of a runway incursion, which you've probably heard quite a bit about the FAA over the last three or four years about aircraft landing and taking off and the incursion that can happen there. The movement of 150 feet will allow line of sight, so the air traffic controllers can see the entire taxiway and the intersection. That move will also allow us to change the geometry of the two taxiways as they meet the runway to meet current standards. The next part of it is the extension of 720 feet to the approach side of 6, which is towards the southwest. This happens, is essential for us to meet our B2 category standards, which operate at about a 42- to 4300-foot runway for a category 2Bs. We're at the minimum currently now, the minimum standard for that category of an airport. And overall, out of the 22 or so category B2 airports in Michigan, we're in the lower quarter of length, even though that our number of operations is quite higher than most of the other ones. So those two safety mitigations are proactive steps the airport's doing, wants to do, to ensure that we can meet the current safety standards as documented for category B and the runway incursion problems. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Andrew McGill.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to reiterate my letter to you of last week, pointing out some important facts you should know before voting on tonight's resolutions on the proposed expansion of Ann Arbor Municipal Airport. First, these items appear on tonight's agenda as the safety extension of runway 624. But the FAA says the current runway is already safe, and the words "safety extension" are nowhere in the 93-page environmental assessment or the 17-page finding of no significant environmental impact, although expansion advocates still use that phrase before you. Also, the claim that an expanded runway is for pilot safety because of 12 so-called overruns between 1998 and 2008 is not supported by the facts. Actually, only two overruns were significant, and even those planes only ran a few dozen feet off the end of the runway, not justification for a 720-foot runway extension. Another item claims that the current runway users suffer undue concessions in reduced fuel passengers and make diversions to other airports. Yet, despite repeated FAA demands, the city did not provide details on the concessions' frequency, severity of impact, economic consequences, and other pertinent details. If the concessions warranted a runway extension, Ann Arbor had 12 years to produce supporting documentation, yet it did not. Instead, consider the safety of people living near the airport in Ann Arbor or Pittsfield. Any expansion would worsen the harmful health effects of aircraft noise, harmful leaded gasoline rain from the piston-driven aircraft, which make up 95% of the ARB fleet, $4.5 million in possibly lost property tax revenue to local governments, including $1.5 million lost annually to the Ann Arbor Public Schools, risk to the drinking water wells at the airport, and the city's own admission that an expanded runway could increase jet traffic tenfold to a dangerous 3,600 operations a year. A last point, tonight's resolution states that all funding for this project comes from fees paid by users of aviation industry services. Not true. Almost $600 million of the federal airports fund comes directly from income taxes, and the user fee statement misleadingly implies that pilots and plane owners will pay for any runway extension. Also not true, over 96%, 96% comes from taxes paid by you and me every time we buy an airplane ticket, ship a package by FedEx, UPS, or order from Amazon, not small airplane operators. We urge you to vote against these resolutions tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kathy Boris.
Kathy Boris, phone number 644. Press star six, unmute your phone. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. My name is Kathy Boris. I live at 1726 Charlton. Our A20 plan boasts the goal of carbon neutrality by the year 2030. It also recommends a strategy for reaching this goal. The strategy is to reduce the miles we travel in our vehicles, regardless of vehicle type, by 50%. With this goal in mind, it is ironic that DS1 and DS2 have been put on the agenda for City Council's approval tonight, because DS1 and DS2 will move forward a conflicting goal, the goal of reconfiguring and extending the runways of Ann Arbor Airport. This in turn will enable use by larger jets and more jet traffic. Here is what Mayor Taylor says in his letter of welcome on page 5 of the A20 plan, and I quote, "Every person, every homeowner, renter, student, visitor, community member, business owner, worker, youth, and elected leader, has a significant role to play in achieving community-wide carbon neutrality," end quote. When Mayor Taylor says "every person," I believe that every person must include those who travel to and from Ann Arbor by private or corporate jet. If that is not the case, if only persons of lesser financial means than jet travelers are asked to make sacrifices, then that certainly flies in the face of the admirable goals of the A20 plan. DS1 and DS2 claim that the runway should be extended for reasons of safety, but no clear danger from the current design of the runways has ever been demonstrated. Others say they suspect that the true purpose of the proposed runway extension is to allow more and larger jets into Ann Arbor's airport at a time when we are fully aware of how highly polluting these jets are. Considering that we are in a climate emergency, I encourage every person on City Council to vote no on DS1 and DS2. Instead, let's move forward with projects of broader community benefit.
30 seconds.
Because an extended airport runway will benefit only the very wealthy. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Aaron Enzer.
Mayor, City Council, thank you. I've been flying out of the Ann Arbor Airport since the early 90s. It was an airport where I learned how to fly that led to an airline career. I had the opportunity to be able to fly in worldwide cargo service, supporting our troops, flying air ambulance missions, saving people's lives, literally. And all of that started at Ann Arbor Airport. By expanding this runway, you're going to make it a safer airport. That's why the word "safety" is in the package tonight or on the agenda. A longer runway gives a pilot a choice if they're taking off and maybe something doesn't quite seem right, to be able to abort that takeoff much further into the takeoff roll and be able to still stop safely on the remaining runway. There were two engine failures that were at Ann Arbor Airport, both of which the airplanes with the longer runway could have returned to the runway but were forced to land in the field beyond the runway. You know, one of which, fortunately, there was only very minor damage to the airplane. Another one, the damage was so substantial of the airplane, they actually, the fire department had to cut the pilot out of the airplane. And fortunately, not substantial injuries, but nonetheless, had the runway been longer, that same very airplane could have landed on the runway, and had he rolled slowly off the end of the runway, would not have caused the damage and destruction. Earlier this year, I observed a small, six-seat airplane landing short of the runway, and they landed short of the runway because the runway is short. So you try to land at the very beginning to give yourself the maximum amount of rolling time and stopping time available to be able to utilize the short runway. It was already brought up tonight, there have been 12 runway excursions from the Ann Arbor Airport. The rest of the entire state during that time, all airports together, was five. So 2/3 of the runway excursions of going off the end of the runway are at the Ann Arbor Airport. So I urge you to vote in favor of these proposals, because you literally are going to be saving somebody's life someday. You will make it safer at the Ann Arbor Airport. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Sullivan.
Good evening. My name is John Sullivan. I regularly fly out of the Ann Arbor Airport. The airport is an essential resource for the community with flight schools, flying clubs, aircraft rental, and aircraft maintenance facilities. Many of my friends and students have gone on to fly for United, Delta, American, and other aviation companies. We do aerial survey, and our twin-engine aircraft require the full length of runway 624. We would benefit from having more runway to have a larger safety margin. We carry cameras which map out the harmful algae bloom in the western basin of Lake Erie, help monitor the safety of natural resources and other environmental situations. Our airplanes and cameras are heavy, which require more runway. We would be more comfortable with the proposed enhancements. Ann Arbor runways are the shortest we've ever landed on. We'll go out and land on three or four runways a day, and always coming back to Ann Arbor is the shortest runway we land on. An important feature of safety enhancements will be the improved visibility for control tower personnel to have visual contact with the aircraft holding short of runway 24. At this time, there's a significant blind spot for the personnel in the air traffic control tower, which is located right here. And the line of sight to the hold-short area for runway 24 is here. Unless you're right at the hold-short line, if there are other airplanes in queue waiting for the runway, the tower controllers cannot see those airplanes, which is a safety issue. So I think we should expand the runway. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Adam Juskevich.
Adam Juskevich on Zoom. Go ahead.
Good evening. This is Adam Juskevich calling from the fourth ward. I'd like to talk about DS1 and 2 regarding the municipal airport. On the question of the runway extension, this seems like a fairly mundane change. It does not appear to let larger airplanes use the airport that can't already use it, but would rather enable those operations to take place safely on the few days a year when runway conditions or density altitude due to heat or humidity prevent them. If we're going to continue to have a municipal airport, and perhaps we should be asking this question, I think it is prudent to be mindful of safe operations and make smart investments in the infrastructure, especially if a grant will pay for it. That said, I don't have strong feelings one way or the other. Others, such as Mr. Garber, have spoken about the carbon cost of aviation. I would however like to address the fact that many of the airplanes flying out of ARB burn leaded gasoline. This doesn't really have much to do with the runway extension, because the aircraft that would be most affected by that burn jet fuel, which does not contain lead. But I think that because we are talking about the airport, it is relevant. According to a 2023 press release from the EPA announcing its determination that lead in aviation is a threat to public health, quote, "The science is clear. Exposure to lead can cause irreversible and lifelong health effects in children," said EPA Administrator Michael S. Reagan. Aircraft that use leaded fuel are the dominant source of lead emissions in our air. With today's action, the Biden-Harris administration can move forward in the process to propose new standards to protect all communities from the serious threat of lead pollution from aircraft," unquote. The press release also notes that the FAA and industry have been working on a program since 2022 called "Eliminating Aviation Gasoline Lead Emissions," or EAGLE. One of the leaders in this space, Avfuel, is an Ann Arbor company, and their product G100UL is an unleaded alternative that has FAA approval to be used in most of these airplanes under a supplemental type certificate. According to an article from the Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association, Reed Hillview of Santa Clara County Airport has switched entirely over to G100UL, phasing out the sales of leaded 100LL avgas. However City Council votes tonight on extending the runway, I ask that you please explore whatever avenues the city may pursue to accelerate the local transition away from leaded gasoline. This could mean working with Avfuel to get G100UL available at ARB earlier and eventually phasing out 100LL sales. I've skeeted links to these articles on the A2 Council tag on Blue Sky.
30 seconds.
In case anyone wants. Thank you.
Thank you. Other communications today from council? Councilmember Briggs.
Thanks. Councilmember Cornell and I are going to be having our monthly ward meeting on Sunday, December 15th at 4:00 p.m. We are moving to virtual meetings, at least for the winter, maybe beyond. So we'll be sharing that link as we get closer to the date. Folks can contact us personally, or we'll also be sharing it via websites and social media.
Councilmember Ayer.
Thank you. Just a quick update from the Policy Committee for our council colleagues and for the community. As lame duck is underway in the state legislature, we are actively tracking a number of bills that are seeing some action in committee and floor votes. We have our lobbyists in Lansing. We work with Dykema, of course, and they are tracking these bills and engaging where necessary, either behind the scenes or in committees for us. And so specifically the bills that we're really paying attention to right now, there's the Package of Polluter Pay bills, which of course would be very exciting to see those move through. There is the Stormwater Management Utility Act, which is of great interest to us here in Ann Arbor. And there is a package of bills, actually, that are being heard in committee tomorrow at the House Economic Development Committee related to housing and doing a number of things that we are already doing here in Ann Arbor, but requiring communities to set parking maximums, relax, remove some red tape related to site plans, making residential duplexes permitted by right in single-family zoning, and changing some footprint and boundary-related issues. So those would be exciting if those went through, and just wanted to update everybody on what was going on in Lansing. Thanks.
Further communication from council? Councilmember Cornell.
I brought this up at our last meeting, but I think it's important to...
I brought this up at our last meeting, but I think it's important to remind folks that this weekend, Friday night, is Midnight Madness downtown. If you've gone before, this is going to be, I think, extra exciting. The roads will be closed, the streets downtown will be closed to allow for the community to have more space and a lot more activations. And so I'm pretty excited that Santa will be there on Main Street from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. Santa's mailbox is out in front of Connor O'Neill's Pub. If you put a letter in there, no matter your age, you will get a response. There will be caroling, Irish dancing. I don't know what that has to do with Christmas, but it sounds exciting. There's a cocktail crawl throughout the social district as well. A lot of stuff is going on. A lot of the businesses downtown have put a ton of time and thoughtfulness into making this a great event for our community. And so I hope everyone will come out. And shameless plug, if you come to the Ann Arbor Art Center, you can make a luminary for free and take it home with you for your own holiday cheer. So come on out and support downtown. It really is. This is a really low-stress, very fun way to come downtown and have a nice night on Main Street.
Councilmember Ackman.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to draw attention to a note that we recently got from our city administrator to let us know that our three-year road bond that was approved in 2022 has come to its conclusion. Three years flies by fast. But now that that period has ended, we got the very happy news that the city was able to treat 25.5 additional surface miles during the three-year period. Those are miles that would not have been repaired in that time otherwise. You can view a full map of all of the projects that were completed with the road bond. If you just look up road bond, Ann Arbor Roads, you'll see a GIS dashboard, a lot of ward four projects on there, but of course, they were all across the city. So I'd encourage you to look and see what we were able to accomplish, and I want to thank our city administrator and city staff.
Further communication from council? I would like to request confirmation of the following reappointments that were presented to City Council on November 18, 2024, to the Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees, Alex Nerdum, and to the Recreation Advisory Board, Nicholas Crowe. May I have a motion? Please move by. Councilmember Watson, second by Councilmember Dish. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? They are approved. I'd like to request confirmation of the following appointments that were presented to City Council on November 18, 2024, to the Human Rights Commission, Rebecca Noyle and Hannah Lane. May I have a motion? Please move by. Councilmember Gazi Edwin, second by Councilmember Dish. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? They are approved. I'd like to recommend the following appointments for your consideration, to the Board of Review, Ryan Dibble, Catherine White. Both reappointments. We have before us the Consent Agenda. May I have a motion, please, to approve the Consent Agenda? Move by Councilmember Ackman, second by Councilmember Cornell. Discussion of the Consent Agenda? All in favor? All opposed? The Consent Agenda is approved with 11 council members present, all voting the affirmative, thus satisfying the eight-vote requirement in respect to CA 2 and CA 6. We now come to a public hearing. Public hearings are opportunities for members of the public to speak to council and the community about the specific subject matter of that public hearing. To speak at a public hearing, you need not have signed up in advance, but your speech must relate to the specific subject matter of the public hearing. That is to say, the specific item on the agenda to which the public hearing relates. Speakers in all instances, whether home or online, will have three minutes in which to speak, so please pay close attention to the time. Our clerk or the time clock will notify you when 30 seconds are remaining and when your time is expired. When your time is expired, please conclude your remarks and cede the floor. Public hearing number one, an ordinance to amend Section 2.3 of Chapter 25, Solid Waste of Title II Utilities and Services of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Is there anyone in house who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Thanks, Mayor. Ken Garber again. The purpose of these amendments is to ensure, as I understand it, that trash and recycling and compost bins aren't placed in bike lanes and thus obstruct bike traffic. So I want to thank Councilmembers Ackman, Briggs, and Dish, I believe, for co-sponsoring this. This is really important. There are enough hazards facing bicyclists already. This has been a sore point with me encountering these bins in bike lanes. Tonight, I rode down here along Plymouth Road from the Nixon Green Area, and just in the short stretch of Detroit Street and North Fifth, I had to swerve around 11 different bins. I assume that in this area, Monday must be trash collection day. So I really commend council for considering this. I urge you to pass it. It's a common sense changes. And, you know, in situations where homeowners, you know, have a steep berm and feel compelled to put their bins in the bike lane, it specifies that the driveway would be a good alternative, and that seems to make sense, and it seems very workable. So thank you for the opportunity again to speak, and I urge passage of this.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in house who would like to speak at this public hearing? Is there anyone online who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Mayor, I don't see any callers online with their hands raised.
Seeing no one, this public hearing is closed. We have before us the work session minutes of November 12, 2024, and the regular session meeting minutes of November 18, 2024. May I have a motion, please, to approve these minutes? Move by Councilmember Watson, seconded by Councilmember Malik. Discussion, please, of the minutes. All in favor? All opposed? The minutes are approved. B1, an ordinance to amend Section 2.3 of Chapter 26, Solid Waste of Title II Utilities and Services of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Move by Councilmember Ackman, seconded by Councilmember Briggs. Discussion, please, of B1. Councilmember Dish.
I'm excited to talk about this. This is, of course, first reading, but I'm going to give you a rundown on what's so great here, because it's really quite exciting. And I'm going to start with reimbursements.
Councilmember Dish, if I may.
Am I crazy?
You are so excited to talk to us about whatever it is you're about to talk to us about that you've skipped items.
Okay. All I want to say about the garbage bags, no, the garbage cans in the bike lanes, I know we don't call them that, that, you know, yes, Mr. Garber, it is not just dodge the bin, it's also dodge what is often left behind from when the bins are emptied. So there's glass, there's bags of stuff that you don't know what they are, so you don't want to run over them. I look forward to VAT not being part of my bike commute, too, and I will wait my turn for the next thing.
Further discussion? Councilmember Ackman.
Yeah, I just thought I would add a little bit more clarity to this because I think that there was a little bit of confusion because the regulations, regulations before did say something to the effect of trash bins not being allowed in the bike lanes. The issue is that our ordinance did not say that, and so that creates a problem when you want to cite somebody for something and take it to any kind of magistrate. So what this does is we took a very simple approach to updating the ordinance. That's why there's no specificity outline there. It's just that trash bins do not belong in bike lanes. And then the regs, which are written by staff and can change with time without council approval, can be changed because, as we know, we have a number of different configurations and unique cases. You know, someone mentioned about having steep easements and needing the driveway. There's probably things that we haven't even imagined yet, and that's why, you know, it's best for staff to amend these as needed for the particular bike configuration. So thanks.
Councilmember Briggs.
Just to repeat a little bit of what I said last time, thanks to Councilmember Ackman for taking the lead on this, and to Attorney Riser for working so diligently to make these amendments. I think this is a nice, common sense improvements to make our bike lanes and our bike infrastructure more usable in the community. You know, it's a, we want to make sure, this will be a bit of a theme to my comments tonight, we want to make sure that our infrastructure that we invest in is safe and usable, and I think we're committed to doing that as a community. So thanks.
Further discussion? Councilmember Adina.
Thank you. I want to also reiterate my thanks to the sponsors for bringing this forward and for working with staff on an issue that has certainly been a hot topic in the community for a while now and for working towards a solution. I shared with a couple of the sponsors over the holiday that I had been contacted by some constituents about some of the very kind of regulations that maybe we haven't even thought about yet, and so I appreciate Councilmember Ackman for bringing up that that will be kind of an ongoing piece that can be modified and developed as we encounter different scenarios. And so to residents who are still thinking about some of the scenarios that they don't necessarily quite know how it works at their location, please feel free to reach out to us, and we can make sure that we're passing those along to staff. I know specifically in situations where there are multiple units using a single driveway and how that might be impacted by, if there's a steep berm and things like that. And so those are all the pieces that are ultimately going to be dealt with in the reg side, and so there are things that we can continue to look at and develop. And so thank you to the community member who raised those issues, and we will continue working on them. Thanks.
Further discussion? I'm grateful to the sponsors for highlighting this issue and for staff for working with them to accomplish what I think is a pretty reasonable solution to an ongoing complication. You know, our goal as a municipal government is to improve basic services and enhance quality of life, and that often happens in the right-of-way. By the passage of this ordinance, we are going to clarify, and by the implementation of subsequent regulations, we're going to further explain how it is that we can look to use the right-of-way for as many purposes as possible in this context, for the efficient collection of solid waste, and of course, as part of our crucial transportation network, i.e. bike lanes. It's a good effort, it's a good implementation, and I'm excited that it's going to be moving forward. Further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It is approved. C1, an ordinance to amend Section 522, 526, 528, 529, 530, and 537 of Chapter 55, Unified Development Code of Title V of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor, Fences, Reimbursements, Public and Private Utilities. Move by Councilmember Dish, seconded by Councilmember Watson. Discussion, please, of C1. Councilmember Dish.
Take two. I'm going to start with reimbursements. So currently, the city offers a 50% reimbursement of application fees to a developer who provides affordable housing as part of a project. Now, currently, developments with any number or percentage, including a single affordable housing unit, are offered reimbursement of 50% of fees paid. On larger projects, this is a lucrative reimbursement, and the city should ensure to align that what we are giving up warrants what we are getting in return. So I want to give you a couple of examples. Under the current rules, a 20-story, 280,000-square-foot building could be reimbursed for over $12,000 of $25,000 total fees for dedicating just 4% floor area to affordable housing. Under the new formula, instead of $12,000, that reimbursement, if you offer, if you dedicated 4% of your floor area to affordable housing, the reimbursement would be a little over $500. This is money that we will keep in the city coffers if you approve this ordinance. I want to give you one more example. Imagine a site plan for 15 new buildings, including a hotel, eight apartment buildings, three restaurants, and three parking structures, totaling a little over 2 million square feet of floor area and including 229 affordable housing dwelling units, which is a great thing, but accounting for 6% of the total floor area. That project would normally require about $120 million, wait, no, $120,000 in fees. Sorry about that. It's expensive to develop here, but not quite that expensive. The current policy would reimburse half of that, almost $60,000. The proposed policy would reimburse $3,554. So this is an important move. It would not affect entirely affordable housing developments, but will prorate reimbursements for mixed-use developments or developments that provide affordable housing dwelling units alongside market rate. So these are important. I do not think this will dissuade people from including affordable housing fees, but it will ensure that we take in the money that our staff needs to service these projects, which is quite a lot. So fences, you will no longer be able to have fences with sharp edges, barbed wire, or spikes that are not decorative spikes, and you need to get rid of your electrified fence, too, in a residential neighborhood, according to this amendment. We prohibit all those things in non-res, and we might as well prohibit them in residential areas as well. There are a couple of other things about fences that I don't think are interesting. The public, well, then, we will just leave public-private utilities to your own research.
All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, did you? All opposed? It is approved. DC1, Resolution to Accept Grant Funds from the American Lung Association and Appropriate to the Climate Millage Fund to Reimburse $667,621 for the purchase of two electric refuse trucks. Move by. Councilmember Watson, seconded by Councilmember Dish. Discussion, please, of DC1. For my part, I would like to express a good deal of thanks to the American Lung Association for having this grant be in their portfolio. It is a grant that we are using to, well, per the title of the resolution, to support the purchase of two electric refuse trucks, which we already have in hand. They were a long time coming, having been initially authorized in 2023, but now they are, they are with us, they are in the process of being fitted for our particular purpose, and I'm looking forward to seeing them on the road. And I'm looking forward to the city continuing to utilize this $667,000 that we are receiving back from the American Lung Association for the good and great purposes of our A20 plan. Further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It is approved with 11 council members present, all voting the affirmative, thus satisfying the eight-vote requirement. DC2, Resolution to Approve the 2025 Council Calendar. Move by Councilmember Adina, seconded by Councilmember Harrison. Discussion, please, of DC2. All in favor? All opposed? It is approved. DC3, Resolution to Approve 2025 Council Committee Appointments. Move by Councilmember Adina, seconded by Councilmember Dish. Discussion, please, of whatever it is. DC3. Councilmember Adina.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'll just say briefly, as most folks know, we revisit council committee board, or board and commission appointments annually, but particularly after election years, when we have new folks joining us, there's a need to dig in a little deeper and make sure that we are aligning our council assignments with opportunities for leadership on the board, but also to really lean into individual interest areas and expertise. And so thanks to everybody for working with us to make sure that we could make space for our new council member to explore some of the areas that he has interest in and that certainly he will lend expertise to, but also for your continued service on all the boards and commissions that you serve on. Thanks.
Speaking of continued service, and thanks for doing that, for my part, I want to extend some recognition, honor, and gratitude to Councilmember Adina, Mayor Pro Tem, Adina in this context. It is, it's a spreadsheet of glory, the various hopes and dreams of our 11 council members, plus with the however many committees and commissions and so forth that we have, getting that all together is a little bit of, a little bit of an operation, and it's not done without diligence and conversation and nuance and delicacy, all things which Councilmember Adina possesses in spades. So I just want to say thank you very much for taking the laboring oar on this, and untold, all of us are grateful. So thank you. Further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It is approved. DS1, Resolution to Approve a Grant Contract with the Michigan Department of Transportation and Engineering Services for the Safety Extension of Runway 624 at the Ann Arbor Municipal Airport in the amount of $623,200. Move by. Councilmember Briggs, seconded by Councilmember Cornell. by Councilmember Briggs. Seconded by Councilmember Cornell. Discussion, please, of D.S. 1. I believe we have an introduction for both D.S. 1 and I think we can bundle them to D.S. 2. Mr. Kehanik.
Good evening. My name is Matt Kehanik. I'm the Fleet Facilities Manager for the city. I'm also the airport manager, served in that role, served in that role for about the last 18 years. You have two items in front of you this evening that both of them deal with the design work for the proposed runway safety extension program. First one would be to accept the grant for that from the FAA and MDOT Aeronautics with a small local share from coming from airport funds. And then the second item on the agenda would be the actual design contract for that project. Really, I've provided a lot of information to you, and I appreciate those of you who have gone through everything, responded to council questions, caucus questions, and really am just here available to answer questions that you may have.
Thank you. Mr. Darling?
Yeah, I just, while you were there, yep, come back. Usually, in an introduction, we get to, do we get to ask things or not?
If there have been questions that have previously been delivered, then yes. If not, then you you can ask staff members questions, but those count against your time during the course of your conversation.
I did submit several questions ahead of time, and they are listed as staff responses will be forthcoming. So I think--
Then let's have the staff for something that's forthcoming.
There you go. Okay.
We can provide responses to those three questions that you submitted, if you'd like.
Yes, that'd be great.
The, um, let's see if I have them with me. I have the old glasses here. So your, the first question asked was the budget impact at the December 2 city council meeting. Council is being asked to consider a resolution to approve a grant contract for engineering services related to the proposed project, the Ann Arbor Municipal Airport. While the grant contract only requires a small portion of funds from the city that will come from the airport fund operations maintenance budget, what is the anticipated city contribution from the actual construction component implementation of the project as proposed, and from which city budget will the expected funds come from? So the estimated construction project on this is about $10 million. Our share won't exceed 5% of that, so about approximately $500,000 will be the local share. Those funds are currently available in the airport operating budget and airport fund balance. So we've been planning for this project for obviously many years, and we have the funds set aside to address those. Second question, I think, was partially related to the answer on the first question. Long-term budget impact. What's the anticipated long-term budget impact on the airport project as proposed on the city compared to the anticipated long-term budget impact on the city if the no-action alternative is taken? So again, because the funds are coming from the airport fund, there's no impact on the city's general fund, and the funds available and required for this project for the local share are currently available, so there would not be a immediate or a long-term budget impact. It's funding that's available and already been set aside for this. Third question was the safety extent, safety impact. Much of the safety extension of runway 624 at the Ann Arbor Municipal Airport project emphasizes safety as a primary goal. Does an alternative possibly exist where needed safety improvements, such as the installation of new navigational aids, runway lighting, can be made without building an extension of the existing runway? If the answer is yes, who would be responsible for funding the safety improvement? So we've explored that scenario with the FAA and with MDOT as part of this project. Could we do just the runway shift and not the extension to address things? Could we do certain components of it? And from the FAA's perspective, our airport does not meet current FAA design standards. The length is one issue. The tower line of sight is another issue. There's some geometric issues where the taxiways don't line up to the existing runway correctly to meet current design standards. Obviously, they have design standards for a reason, but our airport does not meet them. They are willing to fund the entire project, and so because of that, they would expect us to do the entire project, not piecemeal the work. If that were the purpose of what we'd want to do, we'd have to provide funding locally as opposed to using FAA grants for that. So I think those were the three questions. Questions to your head? Thank you. Yes, sir.
Could you address Councilmember Briggs' question about if the runway improvements would put the city's water supply at risk? It's a separate sheet. You might not have it.
Okay. The, yeah, that's, you know, that's been an issue. So we have three water wells down located at the airport, and those three combined typically provide about 5% to 10% of the city's water. As you know, most of the water comes from the Huron River. So we are in the Three Fires aquifer and in a wellhead protections zone for those wells. Now, keep in mind that wellhead protection zone covers a good chunk of Pittsfield Township. It expands up to Silo Church Road, past Wagner, over to Stone School Road, and far south is almost US 12. So it's a very large aquifer. Part of 94 runs through that same wellhead protection zone. The project does not impact, and the, something that was looked at in the EA study, project does not impact the well protection. It does not impact the wells. There's no construction going on around the wells. The impact that was, potential impact that was mentioned was we'll be adding about 1.88 acres of impervious surface with the additional pavement that was put in. And again, that's what they would consider a de minimis impact to the wellhead protection area. So as listed in the environmental assessment, there's not a not a negligible impact to the city's wells from a safety perspective. I'd go on to add on that, that if you look at, you know, potential for fueling issues or those type of things, an aircraft crash, again, improving the safety at the airport, reducing the crashes are all things that are going to have a positive impact on the wellhead protection.
Question, D.S. 1, Councilmember Briggs.
Thank you. And thanks to everybody who's come and come to speak with us tonight or wrote us. Unfortunately, there remain a number of misconceptions about the airport safety improvement project, so I'd like to begin by reiterating that the goal of this project isn't to expand the airport or bring in more jets, nor will it cause safety risks for nearby residents. I recognize that some residents and neighbors don't like the fact that the airport serves as a pilot training facility, but this activity isn't new. It's been a pilot training facility since 1939, and that activity won't shift if this project is voted down. Our airport is one of the oldest airports in the United States, with the first flight occurring in 1928, long before the half-million to million-dollar homes were built nearby. Current operations have obviously not negatively impacted residential or economic development in the area, and perhaps that is because the Ann Arbor Airport is a Class B-2 facility, and this project would not alter that. The airport has the smallest runway of any FAA-towered airport in Michigan, and it will remain that way if the runway is extended as proposed. But because it has such a short runway, our airport has experienced 85% of the runway overruns at FAA-towered airports in Michigan in the last approximately 25 years. The Federal Aviation Administration, MDOT Aeronautics, our city administrator, our airport manager, and Airport Advisory Commission all believe that improvements are needed to ensure our small airport functions more safely, efficiently, and in accordance with best practice. So let's talk about the people who will get served by these improvements. I've already mentioned that our airport primarily functions as a pilot training facility. These are our neighbors, our colleagues, people that we care about. That includes youth pilots learning the craft. The University of Michigan Hospital operates its survival flight helicopter fleet out of the airport, and the North Flight EMS flies in patients in need of emergency medical treatment at local hospitals. Wings of Mercy and Angel Flights regularly fly in and out of the Ann Arbor Airport. These are nonprofit organizations that work with pilots who donate their time and transport individuals in need of medical treatment who cannot otherwise afford to travel, including medical treatments no longer legal in other states. Some believe that improvements aren't necessary because Willow Run Airport is so close by, and some residents get annoyed by current operations. We know that we are already diverting to Willow Run flights that wish to land in Ann Arbor. I would suggest that this is unjust. Redirecting flights over majority-black and Latino neighborhoods where the average home value is under $200,000 because our much more affluent white community does not wish to see or hear them is inappropriate. Tonight, we have the responsibility to demonstrate that we can continue to be responsible stewards of this important regional transportation facility. Further, we are not going to continue to entertain requests to continue to redirect flights over less affluent communities. In every other area of our council discussions, we prioritize equity and adhering to best practices in transportation safety. I would encourage my colleagues to join me in voting yes tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. On the advice of our council, due to related litigation, I don't plan to get into too many of the specifics with respect to my opposition tonight, but for several reasons and because I ultimately oppose extending the runway at the municipal airport, I'll be voting no on both D.S. 1 and D.S. 2, and I urge my colleagues to join me in voting against these proposals. What I will say is that Ann Arbor is an economic heavyweight in our region, and I believe we have both an opportunity and a responsibility to initiate initiate a cooperative and collaborative regional dialogue with municipal neighbors about big issues that impact our entire region. On this issue, we haven't always been good neighbors. Tonight, we are presented with an opportunity to turn the page on a decades-old controversy and meaningfully engage our municipal partners, specifically those in Pittsfield Township, which is where our municipal airport is located and which has fervently opposed to this proposed expansion since its conception, with the county, with Willow Run, and with other key regional, state, and federal stakeholders about broader regional air transit and training needs, and the best way to meet those needs in the long term. We should do this in a way that acknowledges the broader redevelopment and growth in the South State Street area and considers the highest and best use of land in the area, and acknowledges the ongoing expansion and growth of Willow Run, their desire to serve the broader region, and that acknowledges our water interests and the quality of life of nearby residents and greater climate impacts. I look forward to working with staff to explore how we can move this conversation forward, and I will be voting no.
Because I am the newest council member, I believe I am probably also likely the newest member to this issue, noting that the planned upgrades and expansion have been considered for going on two decades or more. Much of that history is political history, who has been supportive, who has not been, and why. I unfortunately did not have as much time as I would have liked to study up on this history and learn their reasons, so I based my decision today largely on the facts presented to me on the project as a whole, and specifically on the economics of both our vote today on the engineering contract and also the future proposed implementation and construction of the project should we accept the grant. I want to thank city staff for providing me extensive background information in a short amount of time, and the many city residents for providing their very, very detailed input these past few weeks. I was able to read it all and take it into consideration. I was also fortunate to receive a tour of our airport this morning. The grant in front of council today for consideration is for just over $600,000, with the city kicking in just under $23,000 or around 3.5% of the total, with the rest being covered by federal and state grants. This is a pretty good deal, especially if you factor in that the city funds are coming from the airport fund, not our city's general fund. As we heard earlier, the actual construction phase of this project would likely cost around $10 million, with the city again footing the bill for a portion close to 5% or somewhere around $500,000. These funds would again come from the airport fund, not the city's general fund. Receiving an investment of this size for around half a million dollars while accomplishing all stated goals determined by prior councils for this project and bringing our infrastructure up to modern-day safety and efficiency levels is a lot of bang for our buck, even more so considering the nearly 200,000 total passengers in 2023 that used our city asset. While I considered many factors and heard the great arguments on both sides of this issue in the lead-up to today, these factors and arguments weighed most heavily in the outcome of my vote. Thank you.
Further discussion? Councilmember Harrison.
I would, thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to say that my thoughts are that approving this expansion is incompatible with our community's urgent goals to lower carbon emissions. Private and cargo jets are some of the most carbon-intensive forms of transportation, and the long-term impact on our climate and quality of life cannot be dismissed. While we ask residents and businesses to reduce their carbon footprints through behavioral and operational changes, to me, it seems hypocritical to approve a project that would significantly increase emissions in our area. While the environmental impact report claims the project will not result in substantial harm, we know that technical assessments don't always capture the full scope of what communities experience. We should hold ourselves to a higher standard, especially given our climate commitments. Secondly, you know, we do already have Willow Run Airport nearby, which is significant, specifically designed to handle cargo planes. I feel that expanding Ann Arbor's airport for similar purposes is redundant, and it creates unnecessary environmental and quality-of-life burdens for our for our neighbors in Pittsfield Township. These residents live with the immediate noise, pollution, and disruption caused by airport operations, and their concern, their concerns do deserve serious weight. I strongly support economic development, but it must be inclusive and responsible. True economic development lifts communities equitably, protects the environment, and respects the well-being of all residents, not just a select few. This proposal does not meet those standards, in my opinion. Instead, it compromises environmental stewardship and burdens neighboring communities, all while duplicating existing infrastructures. And for that reason, I will not be supporting either tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Watson.
I have no reason to disagree with the finding of no significant impact because it was arrived at through the same environmental assessment process the city participates in for projects such as our affordable housing development on Catherine Street at Dunbar Tower. However, I'm not sure that a runway extension that the community was interested in pursuing more than a decade ago is something that it continues to wish to pursue going forward. In fact, I'm hearing the opposite from constituents. For this reason, I'll be voting no. I wanted to make two comments on things unrelated to the, or comments I heard from the community related to the expansion but not directly affected. And one is that the idea of lead, the use of lead fuel. One of the big issues with lead fuel is it's used for single-engine aircraft. Lead is used in fuel to prevent engine knock, and that becomes a much bigger issue when when it's a single piston-engine aircraft, as many that come out of the Ann Arbor airports are. So the FAA has launched an initiative to eliminate aviation gas-led emissions, and their goal is to do that by 2030, and they are working on fuels such as the one some of the commentators mentioned. I'm also grateful for the work the Airport Advisory Committee has done to create a noise-abatement program, including a brochure distributed to pilots with recommended arrival and departure procedures to reduce noise. I think we are, in fact, being good neighbors. They have also asked pilots to refrain from pattern traffic, repetitive touchdowns and landings during the holidays when residents are most likely to be enjoying time outside, Memorial Day, Fourth of July, and Labor Day. This is a testament to the benefits of community oversight of the airport.
Councilmember Dish.
Thank you. And thank you to the members of the public who have spoken, and thank you, colleagues, for your very thoughtful words. So the Ann Arbor Airport is the fourth busiest airport in the state of Michigan behind Detroit Metro, Oakland County International, and Traverse City, so it is probably serving needs. As per Councilmember Briggs, the proposed changes will not make the airport significantly busier. It will not allow larger planes to land, but it will make the airport quite a bit safer. If the city does not make these changes, this airport will not go away. It will continue to operate as it currently operates. Its carbon emissions will probably not change significantly because we do not expect significantly more traffic and certainly not larger planes. The project improvements have some elements that will benefit Ann Arbor residents. There will be less noise. As proposed, both runway ends would be farther away from the city, which means that the planes will be flying, coming in at a higher altitude, which will reduce aircraft noise for City of Ann Arbor residents. As we have said a number of times, there will not be bigger planes. I think regardless whether this project goes forward, the city intends to replace all airport runway and taxiway lighting with LED fixtures, plus we have airport runway and taxiway lighting with LED fixtures, plus we have the solar at the airport, which is great. The site itself is reducing our carbon emissions. Obviously, the operations at the airport do not reduce carbon emissions. This airport performs services. It does not just serve the, and I like this phrase, "carbon-spewing chariots of the privileged." I say that, I use it because I thought that was funny, but it isn't all that the airport does. The airport has multiple flight schools and is one of the busiest pilot-training airports in the state. Pilot training is job training. This is not for the privileged. There has been a private pilot shortage, both nationally and globally, for many years. That is expected to continue. More individuals are learning to fly today because the shortage opens up career opportunities and advancement. Dozens of pilots that learn to fly in Ann Arbor are now flying commercial and military aircraft around the nation, and longer runway will make their training safer. Also, the Civil Air Patrol, a volunteer auxiliary service of the U.S. Air Force that supplies or that responds to natural disasters, also flies out of the Ann Arbor Airport. And finally, the airport, it is estimated that between the airport itself and the positions that are supported by economic activity that the airport generates, there's a total of 538 jobs supported by the airport, which contributes nearly, well, 93.7 million of economic activity annually. So the airport benefits Ann Arbor in many ways, and I do appreciate Councilmember Briggs' notes about what it does mean in terms of equity to divert to Willow Run, so thank you for that. And I'm voting yes, by the way.
Councilmember Ackman?
So despite the decades that this has apparently been a topic, I had no idea about any kind of plans to expand the airport until I ran for city council in 2022 and act in the neighborhood that probably some of our speakers live in and heard about it, and so then had to quickly get up to speed. The almost complete lack of community support that I've heard, you know, makes it somewhat of a mystery why this has been kind of going on so long, but I also understand that previous councils have instructed staff to conduct the environmental assessment, so here we are. But I do not plan to support this project. Number one, I will note in the environmental assessment that it says the purpose of the proposed action is to improve operational utility of the airport by meeting the takeoff and landing runway length requirements of aircraft that currently operate at the airport and are projected to gradually increase operations over time. To me, that sounds like, you know, I know that it says gradual, but it does sound like we're planning to, you know, through this action, expand activity there, and I don't really believe that even though there are benefits of the airport, and I recognize those, I don't believe that the stated benefits of the runway expansion outweighs the negative impacts to residents that we heard about in terms of noise. I mean, the airport does present negative externalities, and I think we have to pay attention to those impacts on people that live in the area. Also, as has been noted many times, there are alternative options that exist locally. The redundancy argument, I think, is an important one. We have an airport that's just 12 miles away that is built for this kind of traffic, and so I think since other regional options exist, I don't really regard the, what's been characterized as an undue burden, I do not regard it as so. So I will not be supporting either of these resolutions.
Councilmember Briggs?
Thanks. So just to expand a little bit on my earlier prepared statements, you know, I think I understand that folks have thought a lot about this issue coming into their room tonight already, but I would, I would challenge us, continue to challenge us to think about if some believe that there are negative externalities, why do we believe that it is okay for another community to face those instead of ours? Because we know that those in West Willow are lower-income. It is a majority-black community if we believe that those are negative externalities. I think we've demonstrated, there are sizable benefits to our, to our airport as well, and I think it's an asset to our community. We've heard of all of the, the great services that it provides to our community, whether that's economic or the healthcare services that it provides. It's a real gem, and the fact that this, it's not supported by general fund dollars is, is a real testament to our airport management, manager, and, and the team of, a team of folks that have been doing this. But yes, you know, folks are going to say, and we do say, we have a safe airport, right? True, we do, but that argument hasn't been enough for us on North Main Street or here on. We recognize that there are better standards, and in fact, we are being told by MDOT at this point, there are better standards. Usually, we're combating them, right? FAA is telling us that there are higher standards that we could, that we could follow here. We are hearing from the folks that do training in our community, the, and instruct and say, this could be a safer facility for our community and for the folks that are operating there. And in fact, somebody had to be, you know, a crash occurred and had to, the, the plane had to be pried apart so that the pilot could, could be, could be, you know, fortunately safe, but, you know, these are not, this is not the standard that I think that we can hold ourselves to. I think we can do better, and I think we should do better, and I know there are political reasons, but I think we can do better.
Further discussion? Councilor Gazie Edwin?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, Councilmember Briggs, I do appreciate you bringing up, you know, if there is external negative externalities, and is it okay, then, to divert some of the, some of the planes and the activity to Willow Run, which, you know, is a community that has a lot of inequities and disparities? I think one thing that's important to point out is that, you know, not to bring it back to Bicentennial Park, but we, we do have those inequities and disparities around the airport as well. I live really close to that, to the airport, and there, it is the most diverse economically, racially side of our town. It's an area that has needed economic development. I'm hoping that will happen with Bicentennial Park, that'll attract more businesses, but I also think about, you know, with it being like a four-minute, I think, drive, the increased air traffic activity over the park as well. I just want us to also acknowledge the fact that there's disparities within our community as well, and this actually happens to be very close to it, in close proximity to it. Thank you.
Further discussion? For my part, I'd like to observe, as Councilmember Redina has, that there is ongoing litigation associated with the contemplated project as a whole, and so I'm going to keep my remarks a little bit general, but I would like to say, express a great deal of gratitude to the staff members and community members who have gotten us here today. You know, there are staff members, community members, both within and outside the airport who care a great deal about its operation and, under current circumstances, work extremely hard every day to, to have it be an airport about which, with respect to which the municipal organization and the community as a whole can be and is indeed proud. At the same time, and recognizing that and continuing to honor it, I'm going to be voting no on the, on the project, both on this, this resolution and, and the next one. Broadly, you know, I guess I'd like to just hit quite briefly that if the, if the current condition of the airport did not meet FAA safety criteria, the FAA would not permit its operation. The FAA permits operations with the current runway configuration, and so from that, I conclude that that configuration does not pose an imminent safety hazard. There are a broad range of, of community hopes and dreams associated with the, the airport's continuance and the airport cessation, but, you know, that's, that's not really what's at issue here. What's at issue here is pretty, is pretty tight, is pretty localized, and that is, what are we going to do with respect to this grant? What are we going to do with respect to the engineering services contract, for my part, because of my, my confidence in staff's ability to operate the airport in its current condition, and because of my conclusion with respect to, you know, FAA criteria and the FAA's continuing permits of its, its ongoing operation, and for, for other reasons, too, I'm going to be voting no in both contexts. Further discussion? Roll call vote, please, starting with Councilmember Cornell.
Councilmember Cornell?
No.
Councilmember Dish?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrison?
No.
Councilmember Watson?
No.
Councilmember Malik?
Yes.
Councilmember Redina?
No.
Councilmember Gazie Edwin?
No.
Mayor Taylor?
No.
Councilmember Iyer?
No.
Councilmember Ackman?
No.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Motion fails.
DS2, Resolution to Approve a Professional Services Agreement Between the City and CS Engineers, Inc. for Engineering Services for the Safety Extension of Runway 624 at the Ann Arbor Municipal Airport in the amount of $618,700. Moved by Councilmember Briggs, seconded by Councilmember Dish. Discussion, please, of DS2. Councilmember Briggs?
I would just like to say thank you to, I'm not sure, I don't see him, Mr. Kohanek, who is retiring from the city in February, and this has been, this project has been a big part of his career, and so I know he and city staff have worked a lot on this, but I just wanted to thank him. I know he's had to answer a lot of questions and produce a lot of materials for us so that we could make an educated kind of decision on this, and so many thanks to him, and thanks for his service over his time with the city.
Further discussion? Staff's work is hard. You know, they, they come to us with their professional opinion, they come to us working on the daily, they implement what, you know, council, council's policy directives, and then they provide the best advice that they can to council as council continues to evaluate and reevaluate those directives. It's, it's, it's a great noble, noble task, so thanks. Further discussion? Roll call vote, please, starting with Councilmember Cornell.
Councilmember Cornell?
No.
Councilmember Dish?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrison?
No.
Councilmember Watson?
No.
Councilmember Malik?
Yes.
Councilmember Redina?
No.
Councilmember Gazie Edwin?
No.
Councilmember Taylor?
No.
Councilmember Iyer?
No.
Councilmember Ackman?
No.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Ms. Cord, do we have a closed session today?
Yes, Mayor Taylor, there's a request for a closed session under MCL 15.268, Section 8.1D, to consider the purchase of or lease of real property. That is one reason for a closed session. A second is to have a closed session under Section 81H regarding a privileged and confidential memo provided to council on November 11, 2024.
May I have a motion?
I'm sorry, November 7, 2024. Thank you.
May I have a motion to peace to clone to closed session on this basis? Moved by Councilmember Cornell, seconded by Councilmember Redina. Discussion? Roll call vote, please, starting with Councilmember Cornell.
Councilmember Cornell?
Yes.
Councilmember Dish?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrison?
Yes.
Councilmember Watson?
Yes.
Councilmember Malik?
Yes.
Councilmember Redina?
Yes.
Councilmember Gazie Edwin?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Iyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Ackman?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We are in closed session.[1439.42]
In session. Approve. Do we have communications today from our city attorney?
No, thank you, Mayor.
In the absence of public comment overflow, may I have a motion to adjourn please moved by Councilor Dyrseth by Councilor Harrison. Discussion. On favor, opposed or adjourned.